Monday, September 21st, Moretown Select Board meeting. We are meeting both Ray and I, Ray Washburn, myself here at the town office. John's on virtually and we've got a guest with Jamie and Cheryl Lynn. Cheryl Lynn's here for, I think, CAI with Mr. Rossi at 6:15. Don Rexler will be joining us momentarily and Sasha's here taking notes. And Callie is not available tonight. So Jamie, general public comment, is that what you're here for?
Well, I also saw that you have on hall on the agenda that might intersect with the library business. So I thought I would be here for that. Only comment I have really is that a couple of weeks ago, I was reading the minutes and I saw that someone had inquired about what was happening with the library building. And I just want to say you can let people know that the trustees can answer any questions about the building. If you, you know, you don't have to deal with that. You could just send them to us and we can take care of it.
So at this point, what are you, what are you guys doing with the building or what is your, what's the idea there?
Well, right now, nothing. So until we, you know, Don is, has that committee that he's going to form, that's going to consider the possibility, I think, of the library.
Right.
You know, so depending on which way that goes, that would affect our decisions about what to do with the building itself. But if people have an interest, you know, you know, like if Nancy, I know that was Nancy that inquired. And if she had some fabulous plan and it would be nice for us to know that, what it was and that if, if the building became available in some way, we could let her know.
Right, or maybe we should reach out to Nancy and see if she wants to join that committee that, you know, you know, people who have those ideas and maybe have interest in that building. You know, so maybe all the power there. So when that gets going, that'll be, you know, maybe something we can reach out to. I know right at this point, what's holding up? We were working on a group or I think in fact it was something Don was going to work on as far as getting people together to figure out how to meet and then when that could do, when that could happen, that library or slash town hall committee would get together.
Right.
Anyways, anything else, Jamie?
No other than why I'm just here to hang out.
Just here to hang out.
Because it's fun.
Good, no, I think we have a good time and you can be informed. And there's often things that you can add and we're happy to hear as long as things are good and respectful.
As I said, I saw that the town hall is on the agenda coming up later in the agenda. So, you know, if that's going to affect our services, I'm just interested in that.
On the agenda of the town hall?
Yes.
On the old business stuff?
Town Hall Committee meetings?
Oh, that's just old business, but yeah, you can hang around for that. But I don't think there'll be much discussion on that tonight.
Well, well, I'm going to turn off my video and I'm probably going to like fold some laundry and stuff, so.
All right, Jamie, take it easy. We'll see you, bye bye. Is there anyone else on for general public comments? Not seeing any, anyone Sasha's, you're here. It looks like Don's still having difficulties navigating the internet. So let's go ahead. Cheryl Lynn, if you want to go ahead and pop off mute and kind of introduce our next guest, Mr. Rossi. And we can go from there.
Franco is not going to be able to make it until about seven o'clock tonight. He sent an email.
Oh, I'm looking at him right now.
Oh, you are?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, this is Franco from CAI. And we bet we have been dealing with CAI for a couple of years now doing our tax mapping. And I have talked to him in regards to utilizing some more of the services that they have to offer that we are already paying for and we could add more to it if we'd like to. So I asked him to come and speak with you guys.
Yeah, so Cheryl Lynn had reached out to talk about some certain documents that maybe could make available to the public if you decide to do so. And in discussions, I realized that your website, the access GIS site that we provide for you, that hopefully you're aware of, is still password protected. It's not, it's not open to the public. We have, we have many clients who are, well, virtually all our clients have that service open to the public. And by doing so can make data available to the public without them having to come to the town office or to call and request a copy of something. So that's where I wanted to, you know, just take the board's temperature and see is there interest in opening the site up to the public? And if so, do you, what data do you want to make available? Most towns make the tax cards available, the property record cards. The, I know Cheryl Lynn, we, I think we had talked about the tax bills, making those available. I can share my screen and show you some sites that are already doing that or we can just, I can answer questions or.
I mean, that would be nice if you could start with showing us what's out there and then how it's utilized. And then I'm sure we'll have questions for both you and Cheryl Lynn.
Okay, so I'm at the Moretown site. It's showing, so you'll see whenever I go to other sites, they all look the same. They just have different data. If I go up here, I'm going to go to, to Highgate because specifically because I, off the top of my head, I know they host their tax bills too, along with their tax cards. So this is the Highgate site and I don't know, I'll go to Smith. We're live, by the way, I'm not doing any candid, we're actually on Highgate's public facing site.
Okay.
So if I zoom to that, let's say that's the parcel I was looking for. And you can see that they have their, this is a CAI property card, which I think you already have. It's just a summary card showing the fields that they want to show. Now they have very little there because they're actually hosting the NEMREC property record cards. They wanted the public to get exactly what they would get if they came into the office to, you know, when they requested this data, so they're getting it, you know, just publicly online without having to call in or, or, or come into the office. They also have their tax bills. And I assume it's, yes, the redacted tax bill. So they have the capabilities. So this will host those property record cards or the tax bills for you. There's no additional charge for that. There would be a one-time fee to link up the data. You'd have to produce the PDS for us and we'd link them up. In Highgate's case, they went a step further and they had us build them a, what we call a data batch upload utility. So in other words, you wouldn't rely on us to link them up and host them for you all, to refresh them for you. You would have the capability of refreshing it whenever you choose, anytime you want. We'll do it once a year at no charge anyways. But if you want to do it during the year, there would be a fee to do that. Whereas with a, with a batch upload utility, you could do it as many times as you want. We wouldn't even know what's happening. You do it as you, as you choose to do so, just like when you update the owner information. Smith sells to Jones, you update the grand list data, you run your data processor and the new owners are available on the website. So you have complete control over that and you can have complete control over updating the property record cards.
And this is something we already have the capability to do.
Correct. Yeah, so right now you have, you have the full capability of doing it. There would be a one-time fee to link up the documents that you give us. I think, you're going to have to help me out, was it 500 bucks? I didn't make.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. And then, but I think for, I think the one-time fee of a thousand bucks, we would get them, link them up and build the data processor so that you could do it whenever you wanted at no charge and no extra charge. You have the capabilities right now, we just don't have the data. So if I, assign into your site, well, also you don't have, so it's a good internal tool to make data available at least. But if you open it to the public, that's where the real value comes in, right? So people don't have to interrupt. So if we look up, Smith. So you have, your surveys are already linked. So those could be available to public. Now, if you wanted to, to keep those on a staff site, we could do that so the public couldn't see them. But that's great information that I think should be available to public. People can see how, how their maps were put together.
Could you go back there again, please?
Sure. So, that's, that's a copy of the survey that was used. Or one of them, you notice there are two of them?
Yeah.
If I go here. Hopefully it's the right one. Town Highway five, is that what this road is?
It is, it's correct.
Yeah. I'm trying to see, how does that fit in there? So, you know, you already have that data available to you internally. You can add to that, the property record cards. Right now you have the CAI property card. Again, that's just a report, but you got nothing on it. There's no data there. Some towns have a much better, I can show you another town, let me.
So do we have the, Cheryl Lynn, do we have the NEMREC information, which he just, he shared with us from Highgate?
We do, we have all of it. We like, that's what he was talking about, we just need to link it up. And that was something I would, you know, had talked to Franco about with the list of cards and the tax bills. Because when someone is refinancing, not only is it that they need their deeds, but tax bills and lister cards are always something that attorneys need to get their hands on or even, you know, real estate agents.
Now, as it is now, is that something that you charge for?
It is. It's a one, $1 per, per lister card and a tax bill is a dollar.
All right, so if it's on this public domain like this, is there ability to still charge or is that gone away?
That's a Franco question.
Yeah, so our system, we're not set up to have a pay through the system. So unfortunately, no, there is no ability to charge for that through our system.
Cheryl Lynn, what do we, and I guess I have the, although it doesn't break it down here in the town office report, what do we, what do you estimate per year is the annual revenue with that?
It's not a whole lot. I could get you a better answer other than it's not a whole lot, but I don't have that.
Would you say, would you say under 500?
Yes. Yeah.
Most, in most cases where the towns that have investigated that, they've, they've come to the conclusion that the interruptions cost a lot more than what they can make off the sale of those copies.
Like perhaps one, yeah, if you save a half a day or running around just one time, it's probably worth, well, maybe.
Yeah, right.
So yeah.
I've gone to another site just to show you, I'm trying to find, I think Procter, yeah. So the CAI, I'm showing you Procter, Vermont. The CAI property card you see there is more filled out. They've got more fields, they've decided to fill it out more. But as I said, most towns are going away from this in favor of actually having the NEMREC property record card there. Again, so that they get the same thing if they come into the office as if they were getting it online.
Yeah, it would make sense, I would think.
I'm, you know, I can show you much more of the system if you want. I think the goal this, this evening was really to talk about getting the data linked. But really, if you want to do that, which I really, really strongly recommend, I recommend you opening the site up to the public because that's where you're going to get the value for it.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's would be the only reason to do it at this point, so everyone has access. And I think that minimal disruptions here with the staff and plus just people not really wanting to travel.
Yeah.
Probably a better, better way to do it now.
All right, so I don't know how much, if any of you have used the site you have right now. But as you've already seen, you search for your parcels over here. You can search under owner name by map and lot or by address. Do you want me to go to a specific lot or do you care what I'm doing?
Go to Hogaboom.
Is that an A or an E?
H O O T.
Oh.
Yep, there it is.
Yeah, so I zoom right, oh, we're already in that area. That's convenient.
Right there.
So you find the parcel, you can see the plan that was used to compile that parcel as I've already shown you. When we link your, we've got the CAI property card, but again, there's nothing there. When we link your property record card or, or tax bill, whatever, whatever issue you want to make available can be there. If you have a staff site, you can make available, available data available only to staff, not to the public. Okay, you don't currently have a staff site. There's a one-time fee for a staff site. If we do it at the same time we're doing this other work, it's 475. Otherwise it's 950, there's no ongoing fee for it. You can do a butters list, well, if I want to say, okay, I want to see everybody that is in a butter. I'm going to put zero in. I hit select, so now it'll give me everybody who's a direct to butter. Zooms way out because one of the parcels is very large. Now, a butter is typically across the road as well. So rather than use 100 feet or 50 feet to get across the road and maybe get something you shouldn't, we have this added tool, so I know I add and remove. I need to add this parcel and this parcel. Now I can look at my butters report. Subject parcel with all the butters. I can do mailing labels. I've already started my sheet, so I want to start printing my labels there. There's my mailing labels. And you can export those to, to Excel as well. So you can manipulate the data once you, once you've got that report. With a, with a staff tool, so that's not a butters list tool. If you have a staff tool, the staff tools, you can also, let's turn on some layers here. Let's turn on a flood map. Here we go, there's some flood map here. So with, with staff tools, you can select the feature, not just parcels. So one of the things that comes with it is I select this flood zone and I can find everybody that's within the flood zone and get a report of that as well. But since I've gone this step to show you the layers, I'm going through this pretty fast because I.
That's all right, that's all right.
You've got a regular meeting and I'm trying not to take up too much of your time, but. So these are the layers you have available to you right now.
So can you, can you show me the bridge and culverts maps? Is that up on the top?
So this is data, that bridges and culverts is, the green dots are culverts and then that symbol is a bridge. So not much of a symbol here. That's coming directly from data that was available from VCGI.
So yeah, there's some value certainly, unless I think.
You can turn on the aerial imagery and you can see it with the imagery as well. So apparently there's culverts here, looks like there would be there, that's hard to tell there. So that's culvert data, you, I don't know if you can identify what they have for associated data there.
I know we do a culvert inventory, so that must be where it ends up.
Here's the, here's the information available about that culvert. Okay. There may be other layers available. When this site was originally set up, whomever we had assigned to it worked with whomever there, I don't know. And here's a list of all the various layers, we put them out there. And then it's really for you to review and say, we like this, we don't like this, leave this, don't leave that. Okay?
Yeah.
So this, I was, I already jumped over and showed you these other base maps that are available. So there's all these, excuse me, layers, but there's also these base maps. Because we're an Esri business partner, you've got all this Esri imagery available to you. Local imagery is, simply means state imagery. So there's the 2011, 1115, 1317. This is an imagery available from the state. If you had done some custom imagery for your, for a project for your town, we could put that there as well. And then others, we typically stick Google in there. And that's what I normally go to because most people are used to seeing Google imagery. Being an Esri business partner, we really can't have a Google tab up there. So, let me turn that off so we don't, get back to looking at the tax maps. So again, there's these layers, I'll turn the flood map on, well, let me turn that back on and show you. You've got very simple to use measure tools as well. So I'm going to find one that makes sense. Well, it doesn't need to make sense. I want to know, this person comes and says, my property is all in the flood plain. Well, I can go and check that, I turn the flood plain on, I'll look at, you have to remember where your flood plain data come from and how accurate those data are, but it still gives you some idea. I want to measure, I can measure area, I can do it in acres or hectares or whatever I want. And it, and all you do is point and click. So I can go around this parcel. Where's the property line on this parcel? Well, I guess it follows a river.
Yeah.
So I can go right around and say, I'm not being careful here, obviously. .93 acres are within the flood zone. Or you can, let's turn on some imagery. And say, this person's planning on selling this piece of land. I can just quickly go around and say, or if, 5.8 acres. It's a great tool to use to measure conservation easements, how much of the land is in conservation or outside of conservation, check against that kind of stuff. It's also a great tool if there's a mapping question. Landowner comes in and says, you know, the maps are wrong or, or maybe an inconsistency. You may have, you may have this parcel here. Come on, regenerate for me, please. So you may have this parcel at two point, or say 3.5 acres in your, in your assessment database, but it's 2.2 on the map and you're not sure which is right. Well, before you even reach out to us, you can double check, maybe we screwed it up. You can just double check your acreage. And it says, well, it, 1.1, now we really got a problem. I just, I just identified a problem here. I gotta make a note of that. I'll double check that. But, well, yeah, obviously if this is 3.3, that can't be 2.2. But again, it's a great tool to use internally for issues like that.
Okay, there you go.
There's drawing tools. You already have your culverts on, but I'm going to turn those off. And you can say, you can, I can use these tools and I want to create a dot. I want to make it, definitely don't want it that color. I want to make it red, put it here. And I'm going to put some text. I want the text to be red. I'm going to put that here and I'm going to put, backed up, culvert. Enter. I can use my arrow, I can do this. And now I've got full tools to print this. I can do map only or I can, I can do a portrait. I can leave the scale, I can title it whatever. Culvert. I print the PDF, it's printing a map for me and I can email that to my, or whomever needs to go out and check out what the problem is.
That's really pretty handy.
The other thing that's great too is if I, let's get out of this printing tool. I'm going to clear this out. Let's go back to my zone, my flood map. We've got, there's a share button here. So I can pick this. Come on. Click the link to the clipboard. I clicked that, I copied that, I now write, make it, write an email. I paste that into the email, the body of the email, send it. The person turns, clicks on it and it opens up the site with all the same layers on that you're looking at. So you know you're looking at the exact same thing that's, that, that you're trying to convey rather than trying to do so over the phone. So that's a useful tool as well.
It's pretty incredible you can do all those things. This is, this is terrific.
And this is all, we're already on your site, this is stuff you already have. One thing I do want to show you about the printing, you can do portrait, you can title it whatever you want. And I can turn on the legend. So now when I print this map, it's going to take a little bit longer because now it's making a nice map with a border, a north arrow and a legend and all that information. Once it's printed, you can see that now you can, you know what that green stop, those green lines is the 100-year flood zone. So the legends are available, we have it, you can print it. It defaults to without that stuff just because it's much quicker if you just want a quick copy.
Now, this looks like incredible useful stuff. I think it's something we go forward with. I think training would be one of the things that would, we'd need to look at as well. I mean, all this is great, but if we don't have people that are trained or know how to use it, it'll sit on the shelf. Like a lot of things can, but.
Yeah, well, once, that's, that's true. Once you open it to the public, it won't sit on a shelf. They're going to be using it a lot once they see it's available to them. Oh, by the way, I'll, I'll just show you, yours won't show any information, but, oh no, you don't have a staff site. On the, with a staff site, you can actually get reports on how much activity the site is getting as well. If you'd like, I can show that to you on a different site.
No, that's all right. Ray, what do you think?
Yeah, so. My, it's all great information. I'm a little concerned about all the information out there where it's accessible to anybody. You know, concerned about identity theft or whatever. People can look up, and I know it's public information, but it's still, it's out there. People can learn a lot about you over the internet pretty easily, it sounds like, if this was in place.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I suppose it could be an issue, but I mean, there's, we've got, I can show you this. We've got 365 communities using it, including 49 in Vermont.
Okay.
And except for the ones that are, they're still reviewing it, like Eden, they just got it and Bradleboro. Like Eden, they just got it and Bradleboro, they haven't released it to the public because they haven't reviewed it yet. Most every, all this information, quite frankly, if someone wanted to find it, they're going to find it anyways online.
Yeah, I, I understand that, that's, you know, it's all public. It just seems like it's pretty easily obtainable through this. But there is some benefit to that as well, so. I guess, you know, I, I think it needs a little bit of review by the town, but not, not opposed to the whole idea that it's more.
Don, what do you think? Are you on?
Hey, Don. By the way, I just found out that's not an acreage problem. If you notice that parcel, it hooks across to this area here and that area there that it wants to be combined with it.
Oh yeah, I can see that now, yeah.
I was a little embarrassed for there for a minute.
Thought I saw a bead of sweat on your forehead there. Cheryl Lynn, how about you? What do you have to say?
Um, my biggest thing was making it so that tax bills and lister cards are available to the public. I called around and, um, some of our surrounding towns, they've already got them on there. I hear Ray, what he's saying about identity, but I would like to also let you know that, that was one of the things I talked to Franco about was the tax bills. The homestead declarations are not available. They're not open to the public unless you're an attorney or a title searcher doing research. So those, those values, if somebody's getting a rebate would all be redacted. So that information would not be out there. Um, and our tax bills also do not have E911 locations on them now. We did not print them that way this year. So that we don't have anybody in our town that owns property that is protected anyway that I know of. So I don't foresee that to be an issue. Again, they are open to the public anyway, it's just you have to redact them, active, um, the homestead declaration. Lister cards, we get calls all the time for them and people need them and it does, it takes a lot of time for us to get them. Whether people was to walk in or we just send it to them electronically. Most, everybody's getting everything electronic now and this way they would have it available to them. It's one of the things that the governor is actually requesting is that we make as many things as we can electronic and available to the public, so. I do support it. It's ultimately up to you guys and talking to the listeners, I guess, I don't know, so.
All right, no, I think it was a, it was a really good presentation. John or Don, so you have your, your earpiece in now, can you hear us? And would you like to say something about it? Okay, we can't hear you. Let me see.
Can I also say a couple more things about that?
Yeah, sure.
I think that it would be great for zoning as well. Ours, people are always needing to know their butters when they have to go and do a, get a permit for anything. This'll, as you saw, there's a lot of benefits to it, but it would definitely.
I think that's, that's perfect, we can even do the mailing list and such. Um, so that'll help making sure that people are not missing such. John, anything else?
No, I, I, as I said before, it's, it's, I think, very useful. Especially all the different things that you can show.
All right, so we should probably go ahead and, um, put this on a future agenda. Get the, uh, maybe the zoning administrator and the listers, share with them, get their thoughts and, um, and then figure out how to go forward as we go into the budget season. Uh, this is something that we could probably budget for. It's certainly a worthwhile endeavor. Franco, anything else you want to add?
Oh, do, do you need anything else from me? Would you like me to send a proposal for your consideration or is it premature?
Now, why don't you go ahead and send one so we have something to, to look at?
Okay, um, so, um, a proposal for,
Both an internal and a, uh,
You want to include the staff site setup?
Yeah, just have an option there, I think.
Yep. So the staff site document linking and, and then we'll take it from there.
That would be perfect and I appreciate you taking the time tonight to spend with us. It's a very good presentation. Uh, certainly, uh, I learned a lot about what we, uh, what we have there.
No problem, at a future date, if you want me to come and do a presentation to full board and the, you know, other department heads and do a full presentation of what you've got, I'm happy to do it at any time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Franco.
All right, have a nice night and you're welcome to stay around if you want.
Bye bye.
All right. Well, Cheryl Lynn, I thought that was very good. And, um, thank you for heading that up. That was, um, I think something, especially now with COVID, uh, being able to get everything online and without, uh, staff is something that will be, uh, something we should seriously take a look at.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go ahead, um, and along the, the agenda, we have the update for the animal control ordinance. Now Shane is not on tonight. So what I'd like to do with this is, is other things we're running a little bit behind. I think I just want to table this. Shane is working on some other things with the animal control as well. Um, and maybe that could be incorporated in this, in this document, so. Unless anyone has an objection, I'll go ahead and move on to the planning commission. Okay, here. Hearing, hearing no objections, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the plan mission. So with, I see Karen, John Schmelzer, Dave Stapleton. Well, so we got. Jonathan, how are you? And Jonathan, you want to unmute yourself? Karen?
How's that? You hear me?
Sure can, Jonathan.
Okay.
So why don't you go ahead? I know we have, um, a couple of things. I know at the end, we're going to need to sign off on your, your planning grant. Why don't you start off and, um, share what's going on?
Well, we've been looking at the zoning regulations and we're going to, probably over the next year or so, we're going to update and just kind of make some changes. In the near term, we're looking at doing just technical stuff. There's some stuff that's been suggested by the DRB and from David Speck, the zoning administrator. Minor stuff, um, all of it has to be approved by the voters, so we're going to go through the process probably twice on this. But, um, for help with this, we're looking to get a planning grant. The deadline for application is, uh, October 1st. And you, the resolution, which you guys need to approve and sign. Thank you. If you do that, then, uh, we will apply for this thing. We're supposed to hear by mid-December, we were told. And if that's the case, we have $2,000 in our budget. Could be applied for this match, for this grant that we're applying for. But, uh, it was in there because of the hazard mitigation plan consultant that we hired. We met that, satisfied that match with in-kind volunteer hours. So there was unnecessary to put the money in our budget, but it's there. If we can earmark this somehow for this other grant, assuming we get approved and it's awarded to us. Do that so we don't have to ask for more money for this in the following.
So you think we can get this, Jonathan, by, um, beginning of December? They thought they were going to.
Approval would be mid-December, whether that happens or not, we don't know. But is there a way that we can earmark for this and just to hold the money so it's still available in 2021? Or is it like gone money? If we do get approved, we can apply it right away, correct?
Yeah, I think so, Cheryl Lynn, we could probably, um,
You can't hear. No, you can't carry money over, only the road department can do that with cer- certain things. So the money would, if they're not spending money in this calendar year that was voted on, money would then have to be put into the budget next year for whatever they're feeling that they're going to need.
But if we're, if we're awarded the grant in December, which would be still 2020, can we somehow, I mean, we, we can't send him a check because at that point we're receiving an invoice or anything.
Well, we haven't done any work at that point, right?
Right, we haven't done anything. We're going to do some stuff that doesn't require a consultant. Correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, on this one. We're going to do this in two phases, the technical changes and then we're going to do some substantive changes. For the substantive, we're going to kind of go through the whole zoning regulation book and probably need some help with that. Near term, we're just going to basically go and just make sure that, uh, minor changes. Make sure all that the, uh, headings and sections and all that are compatible with each other. Is there anything I'm leaving out of here, Karen?
Well, uh, there's, it's going to be a two-step process the way we anticipated. So as Jonathan said, the first part is just incorporating the technical changes that, um, could I make a suggestion? If everybody who's not speaking mutes their microphones, then there's generally not feedback. Does that sound better at all?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so the first part will incorporate just the changes that the development review board, uh, suggested. And they are technical in nature. There was a version of this that I, um, put together a few day, uh, a few weeks ago that incorporated some of the proposals that the zoning administrator had made, but those are all substantive. And so we decided not to do that. And so our first phase is just going to be technical DRB requested language. And we can do that on our own and hopefully have it ready for a town meeting, um, 2021. And then, um, the planning grant, should we be awarded, would be for a general rewrite of the zoning ordinance as Jonathan described it. And the last time that somebody went through the zoning ordinance substantively was 2007, it looks like. So it's really, you know, we've thrown a lot of different pieces in there that, um, are not particularly coordinated right now. So that's what we would be thinking about doing with the planning grant. And also including things that, um, may have passed in legislation that we haven't caught yet. So are there any questions about that?
So, so Karen, this is John, it's John. I got, I got one other thing to add is, is the other thing we want to do is we identify areas that are, were kind of unclear. And one of our goals is also to provide more clarity associated with some, some of those provisions in the, in the zoning.
So John, would that be in this first technical phase?
No, no, that would be in the substantive phase. I think this technical phase is, 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 I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, is, you know, there, there was some typos and things like that that just didn't make sense. So just trying to, to make sure that the, the intent of what the original language was is, uh, makes sense. Correct that.
So, so if you guys could just, um, make sure you take a look at the statutes and make sure all timeframes are met as far as public hearings. You know, start from town meeting, work our way backwards. You know, provide the select board with that timeline just so we're aware and if there are steps that we need to take. And I know at one point we will have to approve this. Just so there, everything is, is ready to go. I know by the end of January, things need to be ready for, um, the town report. So, um, just make sure we have all those timelines in mind when we're, we're putting this forth.
I'll double check with, about the timelines, but I emailed Cheryl Lynn and Sasha last week. And I believe it's 30 days warning for town meeting, but I believe for the two hearings, planning commission and select board is 15 days. Is that correct, Cheryl Lynn? Cheryl Lynn?
Cheryl, you need to unmute.
Speak up.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I believe you're correct. Again, do you still have your little book there that was done up for you with all the deadline dates and stuff in it?
No, I'll dig it out though.
Well, I have copies if you don't. But I do believe you're correct. I believe it's 15 days for the select board, 15 days for planning, and then there is a 30-day window in there for town meeting.
But we also realize we got the holidays coming up in December. I mean, it's not like this is just free, open time. We're going to try and get on this pretty quick. Uh, the pla- the planning commission, well, then we'll turn it over to you guys, this planning, of the select board. You guys can have your hearing. And then just hopefully we just warn the changes for the town meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good strategy to have, uh, sooner than later. Otherwise, you know, things can happen and it runs into that, not happening.
The only question that I have is about the time not to let those $2,000 that we have slide. If we can apply it to this other grant, then it's not wasted money, otherwise it just evaporates into the whatever. Now we have to ask for another $2,000 next year.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me just, one suggestion, I don't know if it'll work, but if we actually get the grant in December and identify the consultant, can we pay them a retainer?
Or can we put it in some kind of escrow or something?
You give me a invoice before the end of the year and you can pay somebody.
Yeah, so you, 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 you can escrow, but David, that's a good, um, good strategy there, that might work.
Right, it's just the cost, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but.
No, I agree with you because if it doesn't, like you said, it's lost and it's, and you'll have to ask for it again, uh, next year. We see that happen. See that happen before. So no, I think, um, if you guys identify a consultant, we get the grant, uh, get an invoice by, um, the end of December, we can do that and all can be, uh, good.
So the, the way that this particular grant is working, um, because we're a rural town, we can just ask the regional commission to be our agent. We don't have to go out to bid, um, on the project. And that's a, actually a provision in the grant application. So, um, we, we know for the most part that if we're going to, um, get the grant, that the regional commission, Zach Maya, who's helping us put the application together, would be the agent for the grant.
So there you go. I mean, I think if, if she's on board and you guys are happy, um, with what work she does and, and it works easiest, then it's probably doable to get everything taken care of by the end of December as long as the grant does come through.
Thank you.
And we'll sign off. So tonight, uh, Ray and I will sign, um, the, um, it's not the application, but the resolution. And then John, uh, you and Don have an opportunity to come in and sign the next day or so.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you guys. We appreciate you guys taking the time and, and looking at that and look forward to, um, certainly the long term as far as the more, um, general, or the, the bigger rewrite, I guess.
May I say 20 seconds on the, um, digitization proposal?
You certainly may.
We've, we've been working with the, um, administration and the legislature to make sure that there were funds available to help with that process. And, um, I think it's great that Moretown is going to be, uh, as I understand it, one of the towns that's doing that work. Because it's been very, um, as the league of cities and towns, we got a lot of flack. And I know Cheryl Lynn did also from a lot of people who couldn't access records when the whole, um, COVID shut everything down. So I think this will move us in the right direction for the long term. Thank you.
You muted it again.
Uh, thank you, Karen. Jonathan, anything, um, else with you?
No, you're good, thanks. I'm fine zooming with you guys. No, good. Thanks. I'm fine zooming with you guys.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you all very much.
All right, so we are moving forward and we're not on mute. Looks like everyone leaving us. Don, so you can now speak with us.
I'm here.
We can, loud and clear. There you go. Were you able to listen to any of the presentation from Franco?
Yes, I did get to listen to that. I didn't hear the introduction and why it was coming about. But it was, it was quite interesting for sure.
So we'll continue that and probably get, as you may have heard, the other people involved, listeners and the zoning administrator. And that will be something we wanna think about with our budgeting going forward. So, all right. What kind of money that is to do that? Yeah, it's initially, it was, it's $500 the link. If we wanna have an internal, it's another $475 or $450. So that'll be in the proposal. It's not huge money. And based on what Cheryl says, we gain revenue the other way. We'll save it by not being interrupted during work hours. Plus just people being able to get stuff when they need it, the convenience. I'm sure people will be pleased with it.
It is 2020.
It is. And certainly with things going on, it's nice to be able to have that convenience of getting that. So Sasha, why don't you go ahead? Any reports of communications?
I had Dean Moulton called and said that when the guys were digging ditches, the pins for his property line. I looked, he said Sheila Getzinger is his neighbor and Cory Wagner. And I only found a survey on file for Sheila. I don't know what that entails for us.
So, all right, well, I'll have Ray check in with Martin on that. Because, you know, how far did it move? What, what is it? So yeah, we'll certainly have to investigate that.
What was the name again?
Dean Moulton. All right, we'll check on that.
Okay, and I was just wondering where we are at with Robert Turner.
Ray, did you have an opportunity to speak to Martin about the software?
I have a post due lately about it.
All right, that's something Ray's putting on his list as well, or I will have it. I'm gonna speak to Martin probably tomorrow. So we'll get that. I know that's been budgeted this year. And not just to spend the money, but I think it's a tool that we can use to help identify our costs that we keep track of the costs certainly for reporting on grants and such that will be useful.
Yep.
Anything else, Sasha?
Nope, that's all I had.
John Hogabum, what do you got for us?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing to say about the sidewalks? Nothing, all right.
You know, once again, just all the compliments that we keep getting, other than that.
Very good.
Is there any update on the bridge or they are scheduled?
John, you hearing anything or Ray on the bridge?
I haven't heard anything now.
Came through, they were, it looks like they're almost finished paving through the village here. So that should be finished up within a day or two. I haven't heard any bad news about the bridge at this point, so at this point I'm gonna go where they're on, they're on schedule, Don. But we'll yet to see. There's another, was it another construction?
Yeah, mid-October.
Mid-October, I think October 16th or 17th was their scheduled date. So we'll see. And I know there's been a few postings on front porch form as far as speeding cars. Has anyone else heard much of that? Or I've been on it a few times and I haven't witnessed a lot of speeding. I've witnessed a fair amount of traffic. What does everyone else hear? Is it calming down a bit or? Don, have you heard much on that?
Just, you know, that there's people who are driving courteously and there's some people who are driving like nutcases. But that's not unusual for however, how it is everywhere.
That's for sure. We get that every day. Hopefully, things will get fixed on the bridge and that'll, that'll turn around.
Yeah, you know, I don't think they, I think they opened the bridge on the 17th and then they still have some more work to do to finish the bridge. But at least the bridge will be open.
Right, it'll be passable.
Yeah.
It'll probably be sometime before all the landscaping and the finish work is done around it.
Yeah, they might have some lane closures and, you know, stuff like that, but it'd be open, you know.
Has anyone, I don't know, the Valley Reporter is doing a pretty good job taking a weekly picture of it. With that at all, you can take a look and see the progress. And it seems, seems to be progressing fairly quickly, but.
Yeah, the pictures will be good to keep for some more town history.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that'll be certainly something to put in the archives. So, Don, as you're, as you're on, and your mic is working, what, is there anything else you have for us tonight?
Well, the only thing I was gonna ask actually is if there was some, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday to do, to talk about how we can have meetings and how committees can have meetings. And I'd like to once see if we could have, we're supposed to have the meeting at the town hall. And I was wondering, since it'll be a nice day, if we could actually have the meeting outside. So I just, while I have some of the players on the phone right on this meeting, I thought I could throw that out there, maybe outside at the town hall. You know, be a nice day and we could, you know, do it outside. That's all I, you know.
Or you could do it outside under the pavilion in the back here.
Yeah, that would be all right with everybody.
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
I'm good, too.
I can call Cory, I can call Cory in the morning and let her know.
Was Ray good with that?
He was. He gave a big thumbs up there.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thanks.
One of, so one of, that'll, one of the reasons why I wanted to come here tonight, it's just Ray and I are having a, you know, good time here together. It would certainly be possible here to have another person come in. Not of the board, I think, I think both Don and Callie and John, not both of you, the three of you are probably better off at home. But if Ray and I are here and there's room for one other seat, I think it would be nice if you guys could talk about how this room could be utilized. I'm just certain that there are people in the community who aren't being heard or would like to come to a meeting or express something, but they're not on Zoom or they're not on Skype, they just don't have the technology. And so at least once a month, I would like to be able to provide that. One person at a time, they'll just have to nod before they come in. And, and I would certainly be willing to clean at the end of the night. I don't, you know, I think it's that would be that bad to wipe up and such for the next day. But so when you guys are talking, you know, look at different venues as well and different size groups. All right, you know, if we have a group that's two to three, well, this place here would be appropriate and this is how it could work. Now, if we get over the number of five or six, well, then we need to move it into this building and this is how it works. So if you guys would do that, I would really appreciate it, as would a lot of people I know. Different boards have been, been asking about how, how they can be. And you can do that outside on Wednesday, Don.
Yeah, great. All good, all really good points, Tommy. That's why we're gonna need to see what we can get rolling.
Yeah, thanks. No, it would just be good. And then, because we wanna, we wanna certainly make sure we're, you know, following the mandates. And so, you know, I would have, as you're, as you're going through that, make sure you have the mandates that are out there. You know, whether it's under 50, I don't, I don't know them offhand, but just so that that's your framework. And then we can be more stringent than that, you know. But at, at least we need to follow those rules and then incorporate what we feel is, is best for all of us in the safety hall. So, all right.
Do you think we could maybe, I could ask either Sasha or Cheryl? I don't think, if they could just print, I think they just have a short, you know, there's some bullets of the mandates on there that's out on the Vermont Health site. Oh, you have them already? Great, perfect. I mean, I've seen them electronically, but it'd be nice to have a copy for the meeting.
Yeah, if everyone had it at the time, that would probably be, probably be helpful. All right, all right, so if any.
I just mentioned, I did wanna just say the certificate of completion for the project has been signed. Both Ray and I signed it. And so it will be a final walkthrough because there's a little punchless, especially some pikes. It seems like they messed up the curb in several places. Chips out of it and scratches and some tack. Like the store I noticed today, there's more of that going up toward Moretown Mountain Road. So I, they did a real messy job. And the whole, whole team pretty much agreed with that.
All right. Yeah, so when are you guys doing that, John?
Time hasn't been set yet. I think, I think they're waiting until Pike is out of there.
It's funny, in general, I think Pike has done a good job. I don't know what, but the paving seems to look like they've done a good job. I don't know everything else, but I guess that walk around will tell us. All right, anyone wants to give me a motion on the select board minutes from the eighth?
I move we appoint the, approve the minutes of the eighth.
All right, and I see Don second that. Yes, he did. All in favor, vote aye approving the minutes. Ray with a thumbs up and I and John and John. Thank you, guys. All right, so old business, anything below. First thing I know, old business, we didn't get to last week. Cheryl had emailed me and Ray, or maybe she didn't, I don't know, as far as Martin's time that he was rolling over and from the, from 2019. And I guess there's a question on what he could roll over. We didn't quite get to that last week. We did say he could roll over, but Cheryl had something written down with 26. Although, not quite sure, correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, where that is or where that came from. So what I do know is at the end of 2019, he had 50 hours of time to roll over. We let them roll over 24 hours anyways, and that's in the employee handbook. So that would leave 34 hours to roll over. So, and he was doing that, we were allowing that last year for his operation. So the question was, you know, how many hours was it was? I think we just give him the full 34 to let him roll over again this year, as long as he's rolling it over for that operation.
Can I say something? It's 58 hours?
No, I understand, I understand that. But we also, but we'll also, we'll let him do the whole 58, but he can roll over 24 anyways. So that's, you know, off the, you know, that's his to roll over regardless. So the question is, is the 34, is he already, am I, that's correct math, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And so I would say let him roll over the 34 plus his 24 that he would roll over anyways. But 34 was earmarked for the operation. That's why.
I agree with that.
As seen in Ray. Give us a thumbs up, Ray, if you could. All right, and Don as well.
Yeah, like, that sounds good to me.
So that's the whole thing. Cheryl, does that answer it for you? Was that all right?
Yeah, I just need, because there is no motion anywhere. I don't know if you guys need to make a motion, because there hasn't been one made in any of the previous minutes. So if we could just maybe have a motion so that I have something to put on the file.
Okay, I will move that we allow Martin to carry over the additional 34 hours in addition to his 24 that is in the employee handbook. And the 34 earmarked towards his time off during his operation.
I'll second that.
John seconds that. Any other discussion on that?
I just wanted to mention that there, actually, I had thought that we voted last time, but are back, back in December, January.
Yeah, we.
It was, it was talked about in the minutes, but I guess we never did formalize, formally move.
Right, so this will, we'll do that. And I know we talked about, I remember Ray making a point about it. So whatever it is, it is, and he's getting his full-time moved over. And hopefully he's able to get his operation done at some point.
That'll be good.
I'm in favor.
Nice to hear, Don. All right. Service our land management. What else we got on old business that we need to take care of? One of the things that we need to address that we've had that's been going on, and I'm not sure quite how to get taken care of, because Mike has not been able to get back with us. But if you guys all remember, we had the mistake that was made, the listeners made last year with Green Mountain Power. They were overcharged. VLCT had a claim form and Mike had questions to answer. And Mike has never, never done that and has not responded back to communications. Really proposing any action here, but I'm just letting you guys know. And if anyone has any idea how best to get in touch with Mike. You know, let me know. Otherwise, there are some questions here I'll try to answer, but these should be taken care of by the listeners. You know, this should have been a long time ago, quite frankly.
I certainly think we tried to get, make, make care of that enough. I mean, it's why he hasn't responded or anything.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, the emails are, you know, this one here, April 11th. And there's been certainly lots of communication since then and just recently Cheryl in again. So, yeah, I'm not sure, and, you know, at this point, VLCT is just, I'm gonna close it out with nothing going on here. So that's something that needs to be taken care of. So if anyone wants to talk about that offline or has any ideas on how we can try to get a response, I would appreciate that. Cheryl, anything for you on that?
Um, we still owe them a credit. So we've been holding on to that, waiting to hear about this. So do we still want to hold on? I mean?
No, I think we just, until we get that part figured out, we'll hold on, um, because they haven't been, not like they're knocking on the door looking for the money. And, and quite frankly, I've called them a a couple of different times and they have not responded back. So, um, uh, let's try to get settled on this side and then we can work that credit with them.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't think there's anything else that we have, uh, an old business pending that we need to, to look at tonight. I know, Don, once we get, um, how we're going to meet it or how we probably want to meet going forward, I know the town off, town hall use community wants to go. Um, so I don't think there's anything else in old business. Is there any other, uh, new business that anyone has or would like to sh- share with us tonight? Yep. Um, one thing while we're, and I'm signing off on tonight, and, and again, John, if you could come in at some point, uh, the municipal roads grant. Um, it's just, actually, there's only three signatures need, so Ray can sign up on this tonight. Uh, but we'll do that tonight as well. We'll be signing off on that. And then just, looks like just our regular, um, payroll and such, so the people could get in in the next couple of days, so we could get, um, everything, all our select board orders and such signed off. I'd appreciate. Right. Anything else, uh, from, uh, the board? Sorry. Don, you look like you're sleeping on us, buddy.
No, I'm right here. I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad I finally got connected. I was a little frustrated there, but here I am.
Yeah, no, you sound, uh, loud and clear. I noticed, uh, Jamie and Jennifer, Jennifer, Ms. Hill, are you, um, just here to, uh, listen to the meeting or is there something we can, uh, help you with?
Hi.
Hey, Jennifer.
I am just hanging out. Um, uh, I, I don't have any things. Uh, I just knew that, uh, meeting spaces were coming up, so I was just coming to hear all about that and the Wednesday meeting. So, uh, I'm all set. Thank you.
Good. Yeah. All right. Well, thanks for, for joining us. And yeah, I think all the merrier, or not all the merrier, but people with, um, skin in the game, if they want to get to this meeting, uh, that Don is, is chairing on Wednesday. At nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Uh, the better so that everyone can have a voice. Um, just don't fight. And, um, and then, uh, we'll look forward to hearing back on their next meeting. Sherilyn, is that all right with you?
Sorry.
That's all right. Well, unless there's anything else going on, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Ray, that's a really cool looking picture in your, your profile right there.
I like that.
I looked at that and I was like, what the hell?
There we are. That's better.
That was, that was pretty good. All right. Uh, so all in favor to adjourn? Let's vote on it.
All right.
All right, everyone. Thank you for coming. We'll talk to you soon.